Okay, I call to order this September 12th, 2019, meeting of the Moab Planning Commission at 6:00 PM. First item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. This is for items not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please fill out a public comment sheet that can be found in the hall. Okay. Action item number two. Two?
Who knows?
Oh, public hearing. So, we have a public hearing and possible approval of Planning Resolution 15-2019, recommending approval of a zoning map amendment for property owned by Robert and Kelly Ward, located at 545 Kane Creek Boulevard, from R3 multi-household residential to C4 general commercial.
Okay.
Nora?
Hold on just a second, something's not...
Oh dang, do I have to repeat all that?
Hi, it's Nora.
Oh, no, it doesn't matter. Never mind.
Are we good?
Are we good to go?
Okay. Nora?
Okay. So, welcome, all. There are only four of us here tonight, and as Allison mentioned, everybody, in order for a positive, a vote to pass, all four of you have to vote the same way. And otherwise, things don't get approved, so just keep that in mind. Okay. So, this is a rezone from R3, which is our multifamily residential zone, to C4, which is our general commercial zone. And it's on a parcel that was approved for the Creekside Town Homes. It was all approved, I think it was platted, and the property owners were having trouble making the numbers work and decided to go another direction, and so they're asking for a rezone to commercial. Their initial thought about what wants to go there, in their eyes, is like a tunnel car wash, but once you rezone it to general commercial, or you rezone it to general commercial, and other uses are also, any other use could be permitted in the future, once it's rezoned. So, that's something to keep in mind. They do have floodplain approval from their previous application from the Creekside Town Homes, and they're going to maintain the same, build in the same exact area. So, they'll probably have to change the name on the floodplain permit, but they do have some floodplain concerns. So, here's the project location. I know this is kind of hard to see, I'll pull up the Google Maps in a minute, but even though it says it's 545, which if you Google is like up here somewhere, it's actually, so, this is Kane, okay, this is...
Main Street.
This is Creekside Boulevard right here, where it comes off of Maine, and it's this little piece right here. Let me pull up the... This, not that, this. So... So, it's right here, is that correct?
Yeah.
And it's a fairly large parcel, but only a portion of it is built, because it's, it says Creekside Town Homes. So, this area is R2, this is R3, and then there are commercial uses... Whoa. Sorry. It might be interfering with that.
Is that number seven? Is yours number seven? I'll just mute it.
Nine.
Yours is nine?
You could mute eight and whatever.
And mute eight. Three.
And three. I did, okay. Get those...
Okay, sorry. So, it is this piece of property, and this area reflects the buildable area, basically. It's just right in here. There are apartments across the street. These are the Hunt Ridge Apartments, and then these are other apartments, and this is where it's all commercial. Okay. So, this again...
It's interfering with...
It might be this interfering with that, but...
You can switch, you can switch with...
Switch with... Okay? Better. Better, hopefully, for now. So, this is a buildable zone according to the floodplain permit, and that's the area in which they are proposing. So, basically, you have the option to, and there's, in your packet is a resolution that forwards a positive recommendation to the city council on the rezone, so you could approve that resolution forwarding a positive recommendation to the city council. You could recommend denial or a negative recommendation to the city council, or you could continue or table action to a later meeting with direction as to what additional information is needed. And in your packet, in your staff report, I included the criteria that are necessary, that's necessary to be made for a zone map change, and I also included the comparison of all the uses in the R3 zone, and then all the permitted uses in the C4 zone, so that you could see the kinds of things that would be allowed in the C4 zone. It's really kind of our most permissive zone. It's our zone that's kind of a catch-all, and it's also where things like car washes and things like that are appropriate in that zone. Self-storage warehouses, service establishments, service stations, utility providers and buildings. And there's a lot of that kind of thing further up on Kane, Kane Creek Boulevard.
Aren't they surrounded by Burger King? What's that?
I'm sorry?
Is Burger King C4?
Yeah, Burger King is. Hunt Ridge across the street is R3. So, they, they are immediately surrounded by R3, and there's, the, the commercial is not far away, as I showed you in the previous slide.
Right next door.
So, this is the R3, this orange. This is commercial, and then this, I'm not exactly sure what zone that is, C, it's a commercial zone.
Yeah.
So, Burger King is right here on the corner, and then the movie theater is kind of kitty corner, okay? And then there are the apartments on the next two parcels.
And then further are the duplex and the churches.
Yeah, the churches, right. So, the zoning map criteria for change was, talks about, was the existing zone for the property adopted in error? I do not believe it was. This is a request for a change. Has there been a change in character in the area, including but not limited to installation of public facilities or new utilities? I don't know.
Can they all just be turned down? Would that be...
That's why I'm doing nurses almost every day off.
And, you know, there has been some gradual change in the area, certainly nothing, I'm just mostly building in what is zone four. Is there a need for the proposed zoning within this area of community? There are a number of places where the C4 is allowed. Size, configuration, location of this parcel would lend itself to a smaller commercial use by its very size and limitations on buildable area. Because of the size of the buildable area, we're not going to get a big, huge commercial use, because it's relatively small. So, the size of the parcel will somewhat regulate the uses that are there and the intensity. Is the zoning classification compatible with surrounding areas? Will there be adverse impacts? Can adverse impacts be mitigated? And that's a judgment call, certainly on your part. There's various different zonings around, different zones around it. Will benefits be derived from the community? Again, it would, it's between probably multifamily housing or some kind of commercial use, sort of the opposite. And as these folks found out, at least for what they were proposing for Creekside Town Homes, the numbers didn't work for the residential development. Not to say that another residential development wouldn't be able to make it work, they just would not be able to do that, so. The facilities are adequate to serve this, and any, I mean, we went through this with the Creekside Town Homes, so. If eventually, whatever they end up doing on this piece of property will likely have to come through a site plan approval, and so that, at that time, we can actually look at the actual impacts of the proposed use. If it turns out to be a car wash, for example, this, this action, this action will not allow the car wash, they would still have to come in and apply for that, and you would have an opportunity to take a look at that and try and address neighborhood drawbacks. And then, is it consistent with the general plan? It's consistent with some courses of the general plan. The landowner shows it as residential, multifamily residential. So, then, I just went on to look at all of the uses. We did receive one public comment from the Hunt Ridge Apartments. I've forwarded that to you, and they were strongly against the request for a rezone. So, with that, we need to, you're being asked to open a public hearing, take public hearing, put, close a public hearing, and then take whatever action you feel most appropriate.
If you would like to speak, submit if there are white forms. Are they all, do we have any white forms?
Well, we only got one gentleman.
Grace.
These are the applicants, Robert and Kelly Ward.
I know. Yeah, so, let me open the public hearing at 6:12 PM. I'm a little scared of this tonight. And if you'd like to speak, come on up and just state your name, and we'll have that recorded.
No?
No?
Okay.
Okay, all right. So, I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:13. Would anybody like to hear from the landowners?
Yes.
Okay, you want to come up?
Okay. Is there any information that we didn't give you that you would like to get from us?
Maybe the child's something I don't know.
Is there any information that was not submitted to you that you would like to hear from us now that we're here?
Are you going to, are you still thinking about the car wash?
We are. That's, that's the, that's the reason for the...
Okay.
For the zone change.
Can you explain what type of car wash it is?
Yeah, so it's a tunnel car wash, so it's an enclosed deal. I don't know if, I'm sure many of you have went through a tunnel car wash. It's not the kind that you drive through and then come around. It's the kind that actually pulls you through at the end. You have an option to come around and do a vacuum if you want, or you can just keep going if you don't want, so.
Do we have any of those in Moab now?
We do not.
There's a rendering of what it would look like on the site. It's submitted.
Okay, yeah, we have it, thank you.
So, no, there is not currently a tunnel car wash in Moab. There's two car washes, I believe you're all familiar with, the ones that you pull in, spray off, and then there's another one at Lubbock that you can pull in and pull through. And there's probably, I think the Chevron used to have one that was that way as well.
Yeah.
But currently, no, there is not.
What's the hours that operates?
Again, those are kind of the kinds of things that we'll look at, and then the use actually comes back for us.
But I could give you a vision of what we would like. I mean, whatever the operating hours would be, whatever the city ordinance allows, you know, we would do, or we would, we would take public comment on that. Obviously, it wouldn't be past, you know, 7 o'clock at night, and not before 7 or 8 in the morning, whatever, you know, whatever the city ordinance currently is.
And if it, if the application comes in for a car wash, we will redo things with water. Most of these, most of these car wash systems now recycle a lot of their water, so they're not huge water users, surprisingly enough, but they still would have to filter and dispose of the water.
Yeah, so, just to give you a little background of the particular one that we're looking at is, it can recycle or reclaim up to 80% of the water. Everything's filtered through, reverse osmosis, so, you know, what does go down the sewer, whatever, is, is probably cleaner than, you know, just garden hose water, I guess, so. So, those things are already have been taken in, and it's all in the property underground system.
Anything else from the applicant?
Does it tie, does that land tie right into where the church is?
No, it does not.
It does not.
The duplex just, just north of us.
Okay, there's a duplex.
Yeah, Winkler's old duplex just north of us is, well, there's actually a piece of city's property...
Right.
That is between us and that duplex.
How big is that property? It's just a strip.
It's basically just a abandoned, right away.
It's a, it's an easement strip.
Exactly, yes.
For the, for the water, for the ditch water, and for the city to...
Yeah, you see it there.
Okay, right there.
Yeah, and there's the duplex right on top of it.
Yeah, that's just, that, that, all that is, is the city easement to the irrigation, Moab Irrigation Company, and then to my access to my water.
Yes. Yeah, right there, the creek diverts through your irrigation and stuff right there.
Which is right, like, right in the middle of your property.
Yes.
It goes this way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Noise is probably something that most everybody would be probably concerned about, and the thing about the tunnel car wash, it is an enclosed unit, and it's all insulated, so the noise from the car wash itself is almost negligible, I mean, it almost doesn't exist. The only thing that does create noise is the vacuums outside, but they do, the vacuums are, they're a variable frequency vacuum, so they're not, they're really not, they're less than the noise of a car driving by, really, so.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
No, I, I just, this right, south of it is C4, right? This connected to C4?
The Burger King, basically.
Not connected, but yeah.
Yeah.
But closed, right here, kitty corner.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, discussion?
I have a question. Looking at that quote provisions for all the different zones, particularly the C zones, the reason this would not fit into two or three is because of the drive-through nature? I, I was struggling to find where a drive-through car wash would actually fit, because it's not specifically provided for as an allowed use in any zone, including C4, and I'm wondering why C4 rather than one of the lower C zones?
And I thought it was somewhere. And we do have to remember that we don't really know if a car wash is going to go in there.
Right, true.
But I think that informs my, the request zone itself.
So, service station, service establishment, vehicle repair, and we felt that was most like those kinds of uses.
Okay.
But it's not specifically...
Listed.
Listed, nor is it specifically prohibited in two or three?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, I for one am a little reluctant to go from multifamily, which we are in a housing, housing crisis, to commercial. And I realize that commercial space is also limited in the city, and I'm just trying to decide which of what is most important or more important. And if we kept this multifamily, would it be developed? If we move it to commercial, the possible things that could go in there could affect the neighbors, so I'm, I'm tossed right now.
I think what you said about, we're limited in both areas, both residential and commercial. And so, we struggle with, we don't want to have overnights so much, but we do want to have other commercial type businesses in town. And our Main Street is limited, big time. In fact, I think it's filled up, and we do have to, we do have to reach out a little bit. I think it's going to happen a little bit down on Main Street. I think all of our little first north, first south, all the way down Kane Creek, we're going to have to give in a little bit, I believe, to commercial.
I think this goes under the mixed-use type of thing, even though I see the people that do not, do not want this type of establishment, if that's what they build. The thing about it is, is that whole area eventually is going to be redeveloped. You've got that piece that was going to be residential, which at this point, anybody building anything at this point, unless you have really super deep pockets, will not be able to get done, because construction costs are so incredibly high. I totally get that we need more housing, but I really didn't think that this piece, that this piece of property was actually appropriate for housing.
I agree. I was surprised to start with.
I was, I was not really happy with that piece of property being how, because it's so close to the creek, and it's, and it, and it's not, it's not a super great buildable piece of property. That being said, I don't, I, I do have my concerns about any kind of development on that piece of property, because I like open space, but you have to do something with it, because it's basically a, if you don't do something with it, people will continue to park and camp behind there on that, on that piece of, on that piece of property. So, to actually clean it up and to develop it and make it look nice, I think is, definitely has a positive, a positive as opposed to a negative type of development. I'm, I, I just, I'm kind of trying to find that, that middle ground. Yeah, so, that's my two cents.
Comments?
I just, I, I don't think that a jump from R3 to C4 is appropriate at the time, really. I, I struggle with this is a, you know, there are plenty of zone allowances that allow mixed-use commercial, residential, or smaller commercial operations that isn't going straight to C4. I just, it seems an excessive upzone to me. Where I read the, you know, the plan for use or the ideal use of the property, the property owners are talking about could happen in a lower C zone.
So, my suggestion at this time would be for somebody to offer a motion to table this until we get the rest of our commission here, so we can have more discussion and a proper vote.
Do you understand why we're doing that? Because if somebody makes a motion to approve, then only three people vote for it that fails, which means it's denied.
Can I, can I just say?
Yes.
So, from a C4 to a C3, you're saying the C4 is probably excessive, is the C3, we don't understand really the difference.
Yeah, so...
So, it may imply for a C3, would we differ in approach to this?
Potentially, I think the idea being, you have a planned use for the property or something you'd like to do, but by our minds, upzones are, I think, necessarily rare, and I think we should be inclined to be really cautious with them, just because of the way that things can go, so if, yeah, if you have a planned use for the property, that would ostensibly fit in, say, so C1 and C2 are commercial residential zones versus general or central commercial zones, which are C3 and C4. So, if you can do something, and we've expressed, I think, in our general plan, and then as a commission and city council as well, that we would like to have more of those commercial, residential, mixed zones, so I feel like maybe things would just be more favorable both to the community and then with the decision-makers too, if it was something that was smaller.
But does a car wash fit into the C1?
My read of them, and that's the thing, I don't know, because it's not a specific allowance in C4, however...
But there are other uses that are similar.
That are similar.
So, what I'd like to do, if somebody would offer a motion to table, then you could spend a minute with the planning commission, and we can wait for the rest of the commission to come on board.
Well, that, that would be the best thing.
Yeah.
So, are you ready for that?
Uh, well, hang on just a minute. Somebody's come in for the public hearing. Would anybody object if I opened the public hearing again, or can I do that?
I'm, we're a small town.
That's what I'm hoping. Okay, so, hold on to your motion. I would like to reopen the public hearing at 6:25, and Steve, would you like to come up and speak with us, please?
Thank you. I just wanted to state my opposition to the zone change. We own the property right next door, and it's a residential housing property, and we think...
The duplex?
Pardon?
The dup, which property are you talking about? Across the street or just...
No, adjacent, right up next to it.
Okay.
On the same side.
Okay.
It's 501 and 503 Kane Creek Boulevard.
So, it's the duplex?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're worried that depending on what was, if it's changed to commercial, it would disturb the residents of our property, and it's a business for us, but it's residential, and as is the rest of the area across the street, and we're just worried that depending on what went there, which if it's owned commercial, it would be opened up to all sorts of things, it would disturb, you know, our business, and it wouldn't be such a private place to live in the future. So, that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think the, the reason for the C4...
Hang on. Hang, I need to.
Close it.
I'd like to reclose the public hearing at 6:26. Thank you, Steve. Okay, Nora?
The C4 is maybe a licking corner, so I think that their philosophy was, that's the commercial zone that's in that vicinity, so it makes sense. It would also be allowed into C4.
Okay. So, would anybody like to present a motion?
Yeah, I would. That we table it until our next meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I will second that motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, be tabled till we can get the rest of the commission here, and we can have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. But, can I give you something to say about that? Okay?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is back-to-overnight accommodations.
Yeah, so, there was also a public hearing that was originally scheduled for the Buffington PAD or pad, and it was kind of an unusual application. Basically, the application was for, there's an existing house on a lot, and they want to build another one, but the existing house is in the floodplain, so they couldn't really touch it, and it was just over 1,000 square feet, the way they looked at it the first time. So, the only way for them to do it, because it was over 1,000 square feet, was through a pad, but that's not really what they, you know, it wasn't really built, the pad wasn't built for that kind of thing, but we can make it work. However, looking at the structure again, some of this area that they were counting as square feet is actually not, it's like a loft that's really just storage area. So, when the building official and I looked at it, we decided that that was not accounted for the whole floor area. So, they are just moving forward as a building.
Okay.
So, you are aware. Thank you.
Sir, you're the only one left. No, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Steve.
Is there, is there an agenda item that you would like to speak on? I'd hate to...
Um, yeah, over, and I have a decent property, and I just don't want to express my...
So...
Um...
I don't know how to do that, so I just can't...
He did participate during all of the public hearings, one of them I threw this before, and wrote some letters and statements before, I think he does, and the city council, certainly...
It's Digglemeyer, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're informal enough, it's totally up to you.
Come on up.
Well, I just, I don't know where you're...
You just wasn't listening?
No, I don't really know where you're at, as far as what you're doing.
We're just starting. Have not...
Yeah, I'll give you the, the blow up being bought for me. The piece of property that I own, I bought five years ago, and it's C2, and it's surrounded by, it's on...
which means it's denied.
Can I, can I just say?
Yes.
So from a C4 to a C3, you're saying the C4 is probably excessive. Is the C3, we don't understand really the difference.
Yeah, so.
So maybe like for a C3, would we differ in approach to this?
Potentially, I think the idea being you have a planned use for the property or something you'd like to do, but by our minds, up-zones are, I think, necessarily rare and I think we should be inclined to be really cautious with them just because of the way that things can go. So if, yeah, if you have a planned use for the property, that would ostensibly fit in, say, so C1 and C2 are commercial residential zones versus general or central commercial zones, which are C3 and C4. So if you can do something, and we've expressed, I think, in our general plan and then as a commission and city council as well, that we would like to have more of those commercial residential mixed zones. So I feel like maybe things would just be more favorable both to the community and then with the decision-makers too, if it was something that was smaller.
But does a car wash fit into the C1?
My read of them, and that's the thing, I don't know. Because it's not a specific allowance in C4, however.
But there are other uses that are similar.
That are similar.
So what I'd like to do, if somebody would offer a motion to table, then you could spend a minute with the planning commission and we can wait for the rest of the commission to come on board.
Well, that, that would be the best thing.
Yeah.
So are you ready for that?
Uh, well, hang on just a minute. Somebody's come in for the public hearing. Would anybody object if I open the public hearing again? Or can I do that?
I'm, we're small town.
That's what I'm hoping. Okay, so hold on to your motion. I would like to reopen the public hearing at 6:25. And Steve, would you like to come up and speak with us, please?
Thank you. I just wanted to state my opposition to the zone change. We own the property right next door and it's a residential housing property.
The duplex?
Pardon?
The du, which property are you talking about? Across the street or just?
No, adjacent, right up next to it.
Okay.
On the same side.
Okay.
It's 501 and 503 Can Creek Boulevard.
So it's the duplex?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're worried that depending on what was, if it's changed to commercial, it would disturb the residents of our property. And it's a business for us, but it's residential and as is the rest of the area across the street. And we're just worried that depending on what went there, which if it's owned commercial, it would be opened up to all sorts of things, it would disturb, you know, our business and it wouldn't be such a private place to live in the future. So that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I think the.
Hang on.
Reason for the C4.
Hang, I need to. I'd like to reclose the public hearing at 6:26. Thank you, Steve. Okay, Nora?
The C4 is maybe a leaking corner, so I think that their philosophy was that's the commercial zone that's in that vicinity.
Mm-hmm.
So it makes sense. It would also be allowed into C4.
Okay. So would anybody like to present a motion?
Yeah, I would, that we table it until our next meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I will second that motion.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, be tabled till we can get the rest of the commission here and we can have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is back to overnight accommodations.
Yeah, so there was also a public hearing that was originally scheduled for the Buffington PAD and it was kind of an unusual application. Basically, the application was for, there's an existing house on a lot and they wanna build another one. But the existing house is in the floodplain, so they couldn't really touch it and it was just over a thousand square feet, the way they looked at it the first time. So the only way for them to do it, because it was over a thousand square feet, was through a pad. But that's not really what they, you know, it wasn't really built, the pad wasn't built for that kind of thing, but we can make it work. However, looking at the structure again, some of this area that they were counting as square footage is actually not, it's like a loft that's really just storage area. So when the building official and I looked at it, we decided that that was not accounted toward the whole floor area. So they are just moving forward as a building.
Okay.
So you are aware. Thank you.
Um, sir, you're the only one left. No, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Steve.
Is there, is there an agenda item that you would like to speak on? I'd hate to.
Um, yeah, over, and I have a decent property and I just don't wanna express my.
So.
I don't know how to do that, so.
Okay.
He did participate during all of the public hearings. One of you guys did this before and wrote some letters and statements before. I think you guys and the city council certainly.
It's Digglemeyer, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're informal enough. It's totally up to you.
Come on up.
Well, I just, I don't know where you.
You just wasn't listening?
No, I don't really know where you're at as far as what you're doing.
We're just starting. Have not. Okay.
Just give you the blow of being bought for me. The piece of property that I own, I bought five years ago and it's C2 and it's surrounded by, it's on 400 North. Let's see if Nora can get to it. But it's, it's surrounded by the Intraa development. I'm the little corner lot.
Right.
Um, I've been working on it for years to get the money, to save up. Last fall, I started working on designing the plans and then.
The moratorium?
Mor, no, before the moratorium.
Okay.
I was stopped with the first city council thing. I was one of the people who was gonna help build this with me build because of that. Then the moratorium. Right before the moratorium, I called and asked how much time I had to get this in and I was told it would take four to six months for them to change. And then the moratorium hit after I had my engineering and design was ready. So I just missed the window and what, I just wanna kinda put the being of. There's not a lot I can, you need to.
Where is it? Yeah, I don't know.
It's, it's to the left.
That way?
Yep, right there, right above the.
Oh, there's, yeah, 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 there is.
So I just wanted to put the being of, for me, if you change that to where C2 doesn't do any overtrays, I don't really have a lot I can do with that property. I'm a mile off of the main street. I'm surrounded by overnight rentals already, so as far as, you know, residential, it's gonna be a lot harder. A single home lot, no one's gonna wanna go across from the old hospital surrounded by nightly rent. Impacted by doing a three-unit or a four-unit condominium is not gonna be like a hundred-type room hotel. So I, I don't know where you guys are at on that, but that's my concern. I don't know if you have any questions.
Um, I, I will tell you that we are just starting the process of trying to figure out the standards of what we want in the zones. And so we are not anywhere near making decisions yet. We're just starting those conversations and so check back with us.
Yeah.
But besides that, just one thing is that.
Let, allow me also to, I mean, I, I understand you and I completely understand the views of, you know, you want controlled growth and you want the current growth you want and everything. Couple of my concerns is that, you know, I've already lost my financing on this because of this moratorium. I've already lost the two people that were gonna help me build this. And so when it's up in the dark, it's very difficult.
And I will say, I don't think the commission or the city council plan on removing overnight rental allowable uses in any of our zones.
Okay, and then another thing I would like to reiterate, 'cause I've watched all your meetings, you guys.
Asking.
I know. Like I wanna get your other apps, could've been more. No, like Ryan brought out, and you're adding a lot of these things. You know, building costs here are already ridiculous. So some of it, you know, just take that into consideration when you're adding extra requirements.
Yeah, now, I, I don't think it's the intent of the city council to remove the zoning.
No.
So you're okay there, I believe. And I don't know why Nora, can he actually apply right now for a permit?
No, I can't.
Okay, no, no applications, so. But the city council is, is trying to move forward with ordinances or something that they want in place to open that window back up.
And I understand controlled, so that it doesn't.
To whatever changes, yeah.
I understand.
Right.
So if you go ahead and sit down and let me kinda talk about the approach that we're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I found that out in the paper, so we got something to talk about. So Zacharias with Durant County and the Durant County staff. Cory and I met, we met together and we've been trying to work forward together on this process so that the development standards that we come up with are similar. So we don't have, you know, developers fighting over city kind of thing, which is a great idea. The county's approach, and we've talked about this before, is to use an overlay zone and individual property owners would have to request that overlay zone to be applied to their property, which is a zoning change. And then they would have to, and that part of that zoning change would be a strictly specific master plan first. And we're not, we are not going that way. What we're gonna try to do is look at all of the different zones and figure out what development standards make sense in what zones. For example, in the C2, where you've got smaller parcels generally, where, you know, some of the requirements probably don't make any sense. But in the, in the R, in the C4 or in the RC, you know, we're apt to have larger projects and that means limitations on any one building size or section or facade variation and those kind of things will be kind of, but, and so that's why I set up the little table the way it is. This is, and this isn't necessarily how it's going to be when we're all seven done. Do you need another copy of this?
Uh, yeah, I'll take them. Thank you, Cory.
So what we can, you know, what, this is the way my brain thinks, so that's why I set it up this way.
And I like this.
So we have the different development standards and in some cases I put multiple, like on density and scale, I put a bunch of multiple standards and some may be right for one zone and some may be right for another zone.
Thank you.
And that's why I broke it up that way. So the county has been working on, they've been looking at energy, water, and transportation. And their recommendation is that all new buildings that house overnight accommodations be net zero, means silver or iended local building, living building challenge.
Can you state those again? Net zero.
Net zero building, which means they produce as more as much as they use, which is a pretty common standard anymore. It used to be the LEED was the big thing. And if you've got certified, you know, LEED silver, LEED bronze, silver, and gold. And it had to do with a lot of things about the building itself.
Right.
People are generally getting a little bit more away from LEED and more toward a net zero building, which is kind of the state of the art. For example, in Salt Lake City, all of the city facilities have to be net zero by, it makes that a deadline.
And that is not including water, I'm assuming?
That's correct, watershed.
Okay.
Right. So that's their recommendation and how people get to that is up to them. It's a performance standard. And again, we may wanna look at smaller buildings, you know, in the middle of the C2 or C3, does it make sense for them to do net zero on smaller buildings? I don't know, but we can, maybe it does. And then with water, there would be a requirement that every building do a rainwater to provide for irrigation water. There was suggestions, suggestion about requiring groundwater systems, which may work fine on smaller buildings, but are a lot more difficult on big buildings, just practically. Bio-retention and bio-infiltration stormwater systems, which means we try to infiltrate more than just discharge and try to infiltrate all of the stormwater on-site. That's the goal. We already do, the, the Agribank Division is a really good example where they used their little common space for kind of a outdoor feature as well as storm drain retention. So, and Chuck, our city engineer, is familiar with these and is pretty comfortable with those approaches to stormwater. Again, in some cases, it probably won't make sense for smaller buildings. Pools, and this is kind of interesting. This was their recommendation, that pools be indoors or shaded and shaded or covered to reduce, reduce evapotrans, evapotrans, evaporation.
I was gonna say.
I was just too good on the county stuff.
Yeah.
And this one is kinda weird because I don't know too many covered pools out there.
Right.
But it's something that we could certainly talk about in this recommendation. And then only 20 water-wise landscaping and we, we have pretty good landscape direction. It can always be changed and I'm sure we will be changing it to be more water-wise. But, and that only 20% of the landscape area can be turned lower than that if you wish. But that's the first pass of what the county is talking about. So transportation is a little bit more complicated in some ways. Obviously, we want, we would wanna require them to have bicycle storage and bicycle racks for some of the larger projects. We could also require free bikes to ride, which could even be e-bikes. That's the direction that we wanna think about. So that could be a requirement for some of the, the areas where that makes sense and some of the bigger pieces.
You can't ride e-bikes on trails in town, just FYI.
Oh.
You won't be able to soon.
Oh, yes.
Unfortunately. We don't know that for sure, but the national, you know, is more about it than anybody. The National Campaign is allowing it only on trails where they already allow bikes. So there's a big debate going on. Anyway.
Is that more of that?
So that's just an, an idea.
Or battery.
But right now, you're right.
Okay.
They are not allowed on, partly other bike paths. Some of the bigger projects could have a free shuttle so that they would actually provide a shuttle to show their, their folks wherever. I think that that's a reasonable request for a large property, like something like the World War or, you know, any of the bigger properties. I think that makes total sense. The other thing that we are doing is we are working with UDOT a little bit on transit planning and they actually wanna try to bring a train into Moab eventually, a passenger train or something like, which would be interesting. But not impossible at all because the tracks close. And, but we're also doing an internal review of some of our transportation needs are. And eventually, what we'd like to do is require people, once we have something in place where we're planning for a shuttle system, either have them nearby a stop or a fee and lieu into the system itself for some of their contribution to a future transit system.
So can I back up a minute and talk about our method here? Let's take, for example, the RC. If I have an RC property out north of town and most logical people would be, put a Great Big Hotel out there, but I've decided to put a townhouse, one townhouse. If we zone RC for all of these things that we think big places are gonna want and need, how did, how would that affect me with my townhouse? Would it have to be net zero and would it, you see what I'm saying?
Wouldn't it only be new overnight accommodations within that zone is what we're talking about.
Right, but if I'm gonna rent out my townhouse.
They would probably still have it over certain square footage.
That's my question. Are we gonna go?
Yeah.
So for each of these zones, are we gonna go square footage or units or something like that to deal any big and small?
When they don't.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I mean, talking about water, maybe we could just go through a few at a time just so we don't forget about what we just talked about, like topic-wise or development standard category. Having talked about, I see no reason that all of the water standards should not apply everywhere to any size thing. That just seems to make good sense. Yeah.
So can we talk about water retention in a, in a very small lot? What would that look like?
Like greenwater catchment or?
Greenwater catchment is easy, that's.
Yeah, that's easy. I, landscaping in particular too. That, that standard more than anything jumps out at me as such a huge way. That would be simple, not cost prohibitive for property owners, but could really make a huge difference with everything.
All right, any comments on that?
Well.
Less lawn.
I have comments here. First of all, is this your doings here or is it, which is great, by the way?
With the county.
Or is it the city? I know, I know Zacharias was involved, but I mean, was the city council? Because I would like to see their concerns in prioritized and is that what this, this kind of is?
They're looking to you.
Yeah.
To give them input. So this, I, I developed this.
Okay, great, I mean, it's.
But they, I think they.
It's based on all of our comments from our joint session where they did.
Yeah, it looks like it.
And with conversations.
I just was wondering if.
So as a contractor, do you believe all of these water requirements would be reasonable and financially?
It would be a huge cost. To catch all the water and store it?
Greenwater detention's really easy and it's.
Well, you gotta pump it. You gotta store it, you gotta put it underground, then you gotta pump it. So it's, it is gonna be, plus you have to have the space to put it in. So, and then you gotta catch it off, if you're talking about just the building, catching it off the building, are you catching it off your driveway? You're catching it off all your landscaping? So if you're catching it out of your grain, grain, your rain gutters, you're probably gonna have to isolate all that to one location.
Right.
And then, you know, it's gonna be stored in a, a tank. It's gonna have a pump.
Yeah.
And what, how much water do we get in Moab? But I'm, I'm just saying, is it gonna be, is, is the balance really there?
And that's up to you and the city council to decide. I think they, I think we all realize that some of these are gonna cost more money. And that's kind of the price you pay for, to have things more, to more meet community expectations, I guess.
It's just a step up basically from catchment basins that we have already set up in the, in the ordinances anyway. The, the way, you have to do that and unfortunately, for business owners, to even take care of those basins is expensive because they have to, they have to line it.
Oh, yeah.
They have to line it and everything else. So in general, yeah, it's a little, it's more expensive, but personally, I would rather have it stored than being an open pit for water. I mean, seriously, and there's, there's a lot of reasons for that and I'm not gonna go into it right now, but.
But I can, but I can appreciate that.
Yeah.
I appreciate the, the open portion of it because then it's an obvious water that's sitting there that could be part of your landscaping. But if you store it, there's a lot of issues right there. You're gonna have to maintain that with chemicals to keep it from growing something inside those tanks. I mean, I mean, you know, do we really wanna go there? Wouldn't it be better to, if you did put it on the surface? Because people should be trying to use that rainwater, I agree. But it'd be easier to do it on the surface.
And that's an option too. I mean, we're just talking about a rainwater catchment system. We're not saying how it needs to be designed.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm interested to hear what Brian feels like the construction cost would be for a small lot and a, and small units. And then, so for me, that's helps my decision-making and maybe we can make this, you know, available for this and not this. And so those are the things I'd like to hear, so thank you, Brian.
The rainwater catchment is actually much easier to do on smaller structures.
Right. And I appreciate that.
Community rebuild stuff and everything has it and you can literally build a barrel for jerseys.
Say like my parents' house, we literally just have like a trash can with a spigot on the bottom.
Right.
Rainwater catchment.
Yeah. Right, and I, when I lived in Savannah, eighty percent of my irrigation was from my rain barrels, but then it rained all the time, so.
Well, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'd be curious, and this is something maybe when it gets to council, it sounds like we're, we're talking more just general standards rather than the implementation of it at this point, but what percentage evaporates out of open catchments? Because I feel like we, we also live in a desert and it would totally defeat the purpose if the water that you catch goes away without actually being used.
Evaporate.
Yeah, 'cause at least.
Yeah, there's no doubt.
Yeah, like.
That's kind of what it's gonna do.
For sure.
Okay. All right, so that for me covers water right now.
Cool. I think, I think the bicycle, providing bicycles makes sense at a smaller scale as well. Per, it sounds like based on the ratio of number of rooms. You know, if you have a condo or a townhome, you provide two or three or four bikes to renters, which a lot do anyways. Which is great. I, I know personally, I look for that if I'm in a city without a vehicle, if I'm going to rent an Airbnb or something. And so it's probably an asset, especially in a town like this too.
More could do that.
Yeah, exactly. I just don't, I, I personally have like five random bicycles. I've just collected off Moab class. I've just collected off Moab classifieds at my house to lend out to people. So it's not that difficult. I don't see that as something, I see that as a big thing that we can do. That's not, again, not cost prohibitive to the property owner, so that seems to apply. I'm just kind of looking at the where, where like Allison is the distinction between smaller developments and larger developments. And that one seems a good overlap.
And they certainly don't have to be eight thousand dollar mountain bikes. They can be hundred dollar, yeah. Counties, yeah, okay. Any, going back to the beginning, anything in the energy net zero issues?
It's cost.
It is a cost, but it seems as though especially for small units, it would just be solar panels that would cover most. Okay.
And many buildings, especially some of the larger ones, are really successful in getting net zero.
Right, okay.
I haven't paid my heating and electric bill for a year and a half, two years.
I'm getting my solar in November, I'm very excited.
It's wonderful.
The technology's changed to a point where it's reasonably affordable.
Yeah. I think my minimum, I think I pay nine dollars just for a hookup. And I don't pay for heating or cooling anymore, so it's pretty nice.
Starting mine in November.
Allison's very excited.
It is, it's pretty exciting. It's like, yay!
Okay, so, and we have talked about the free shuttle before and I do believe that the hotels, especially out there on the north quarter, they need to provide a shuttle for not only their guests but their employees as well.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Good, good point.
Which would mean that they would need shuttle stops or bus pullouts.
Yeah.
So.
And hotels could get together and do these mutually too.
Right.
That's pretty common. And eventually, hopefully, we'll be able to sustain a, you know, citywide shuttle system.
Right.
It's going to be a while.
Yeah, such a bummer.
Okay, so, so far so good. And obviously, the free shuttle and the bus stops would be in larger unit, larger buildings in larger spaces. We wouldn't expect a free shuttle from somebody's four townhomes. Okay, mixed use.
Let's talk about that for a second though. So you brought up the idea if you have just maybe four units.
And I think that's what we're looking at, this wide variety of a four hundred room motel versus two townhomes on a plot.
Right, so does that apply to everyone then?
That would apply to the larger developments.
The larger developments.
So what is larger as opposed to not larger?
And those are the things that we need to decide.
Okay, so that's just open.
Those are the projects, I would guess, that are going to go in the RC zone. We have a lot of big parcels that are still left. So I imagine the request would be for fairly large projects. And we can, we can talk about size too. But for a little three unit overnight rental townhome in the C2, doesn't make sense.
Right.
Bicycles are great and bicycle storage, but.
And easy and cheap. Okay.
Mixed use. So a lot of these also I pulled from the work that Landmark did for us. I figured, I thought it's the starting point.
Right.
So their recommendation was twenty percent of gross or for commercial. For, for commercial uses. And then as we get more detail, I think we'll want to talk about the different types of commercial for the different zones. For example, you know, a commercial for, in the RC zone is probably more.
Restaurants.
Tourist oriented.
Right.
And the ones downtown should be more everybody oriented.
Right.
So have, actually having in each zone the specific types of mixed use that are most beneficial. Still providing a wide range of options. Yeah, there's also a requirement for five percent gross square footage devoted to civic uses.
Do we know what that is yet?
Like a restaurant?
No, this would be like a library or a, well, those are public, but.
Or a little, some porous, you know, like a sitting areas that are kind of off the street. Little decks and picnic benches, screen spaces, cupboard. Maybe it's a little like covered market area on the first floor.
Okay.
And again, it would vary by the location and the size of.
Employee housing on the upper levels, I think we're going to run into problems with that for the big hotels because the upper level is going to be where they're going to put the expensive suites. So I'm not sure that's going to work anywhere.
I think that's an option that we would like to see. Not necessarily a requirement.
Okay.
They would still, our existing shared workforce housing ordinance would still apply. That's not going to go away. So they would still have to find a number.
Yeah.
Or an amount.
Right, and we have talked about the idea that we would increase commercial height limits if they put employee housing on the top, but this is not, this is just overnight accommodations. And so we need to keep that in mind when we go forward. Okay. Ground stories must be occupied by other uses. Can you?
By uses of their body service and the community. So what I mean there is commercial on the ground level in the C2, for example.
Okay.
It would be great to have things that are, are community, a community like that.
A dry cleaner.
Yeah, a dry cleaner or even a restaurant outside or a market.
Or a dry cleaner.
Or an Indian restaurant.
A shoe store. I mean, it's a kind of broad range.
Right.
You know, we all are concerned about the fact that we don't have a lot of spaces for commercial uses that support not just insurance, but also.
Right.
Yeah, and that's almost why I'm inclined to kind of back off of the civic uses thing one. I think it's an odd door to open in the first place and two. I just don't think we're a city that unfortunately has space to afford for that at this point when we do have nice public parks and we do have, you know, some nice area around. We have the multicultural center yard. We have all of that space that's open to the public.
Right.
That's kind of interspersed around town. And it would, I think it would be annoying to have that five percent requirement, which could potentially make the difference between a dry cleaner and not or something on first floor.
And the skeptic in me just knows that those would be turned into smoking parks.
Oh, God, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, no.
I hadn't thought of that, but you're right.
Oh, no.
That's unfortunate.
That's funny. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
Takes a high school teacher, I suppose.
Hey Nora, if a business comes into town that say has twenty-five employees, but they're not overnight accommodations, will any of this apply to them?
No. Just overnight accommodations.
For now. I mean, in the future, if we decide that these are development standards for a guide company, they could do that.
Yeah, I mean, eventually, we'll want to go back and relook at all of our standards in the different zones, but we're trying to accomplish this one task. So I hear what you're saying about civic uses. I was confused about it too.
Yeah. It seems great if it's like a downtown urban area with.
Right, but the whole reason everybody's here is to be outside and it's not to be outside their motel room. It's to be inside, so.
And, you know, you could do a fee-in lieu, but then that again adds to the cost or something that you're not moving out of.
Yeah.
So the height, I think, in general, would be per zoning. And some of the development standards would be pedestrian scale stepping required for upper floors. So you have a, your first floor would be more pedestrian scale and defined. And then it would have to step back up to the second floor. And then, and that also relates to stepping back so that you can continue to see the Moab rim from, from the highway, if at all possible. So, and that can be done with those buildings, you know, if they're stepped back. So I think that's important.
So just to be clear, you're talking about it can be three stories in the, in the front of the hotel and then two stories at the back.
Other way around, probably. Because if you're starting like on Main Street, you want like once, if it steps up, then you'll be able to see over it.
And I guess I'm thinking about if I'm building out there, we're north of town and I'm backed up against the rim.
But still, if you're on the highway and you're met with a wall right next to the highway, it's four stories, that's going to block a lot more than one story.
Okay, gotcha.
So.
Okay.
And that's just building form stuff.
Okay.
Which we will describe also in drawings. And then something that I have worked with in other places is having a potential exemption for architectural features or architectural interests where no additional square footage would be derived from it. It would just be something that would add some architectural interest to provide a little bit of flexibility with design. Because a lot of architects complain that, you know, if everything's forty feet, then, you know, it's tougher to be very creative and. So that's something you might want to chat about. It's certainly not.
Okay. Don't want any architecturally interesting spite walls.
Spite walls, okay. No spite walls.
Seen some weird stuff.
So, and I'm hoping the height restrictions are still up for grabs in some of the zones that we have.
It's forty for commercial and thirty for residential, basically.
Right, I'm hoping that that's still up for decision. Because that's one of mine.
Well, I think we should because everything's relative to where the land sits.
Right.
And where it is, the new hotel going up north of town looks very large because of its proximity to the highway. Whereas it's under.
Would you talk, you're talking about mostly the west side?
Uh huh.
So the west side, that's true.
Yeah, it looks.
Because it's already up fifteen, twenty feet. Sometimes it's already elevated. So everything that you said about, yeah, it's right, it's a wall, it's sitting there. You're not going to see much, but, but to the east, or no, to the.
I'm talking about the one that's down. Because of how close it is to the highway, it looks really big compared to what's right across the highway, which actually is higher. It's really, it's interesting.
But you can still see the portal.
You can, you can. I'm just saying like, just pure aesthetics.
Those are the things that we need to think about.
Big flat wall right close to the, just like.
So maybe close to the highway, but, but isn't it nice that they can build as high as they are and still, when you're traveling down the highway? Did you see above them?
Yes.
And so I am more worried about the height restrictions inside the city as.
More than anything.
Yeah, I mean, the hoodoo blocks the sun from everything that is on the other side of it.
Yeah, but you know, building doesn't come perfect. I mean, nothing's perfect in this world.
But I would like to just revisit the height, especially inside the city.
And, and also providing shit. I mean, I think on the flip side.
Yeah.
You know, that's a really important piece. I mean, yes, we need solar access or solar panels, all that.
Right.
But we also need to make sure we have shade areas.
Right, and I know that I used to live on the other side of the new Burscheid building and the other office building that are right up there. And they completely destroyed the view shed there. So those are things that I think that we need to take into consideration in town as well as.
What do you think would have swayed you that?
Height restrictions.
I mean, how, do you have a number on that?
I do not, and that's what I think we need to discuss and talk about.
But we have to be careful because our little town is so small. We have such little land. Are we going to push everything south? Is that the intent?
No.
Because we're going to.
Well, they're going to, so if the county develops the same kinds of standards, then.
Yeah, but the county only goes out so far, then the rest of it, San Juan County.
Absolutely.
We're going to, we're going to push everything that.
Everything that's awful, yes.
Well, it may not be awful, but look at the tax base. We're going to lose it.
That's okay.
Our existing tax base isn't going anywhere.
Yeah.
Something like, I'm, my, I'm curious just from a view shed perspective, from a residential perspective, if we want, if we have variation in height in the commercial zones, if we would want it higher on Main Street or if we would want it lower on Main Street?
I would like it lower.
Lower, just on Main in particular?
Oh.
I'm talking like, like if you were going to add, if you were going to have a forty foot building, would you rather it be on Main Street or would you rather it be closer to residential areas?
On Main Street.
Yeah. But also a lot of it's built up already and you're not necessarily going to add a.
Right.
Fourth story onto the spoke.
Right.
Yeah, I think the only way on Main Street that overnight accommodations would be allowed is if.
Yeah.
And, you know, we can talk about them. I would hate to go too tall.
Yeah, me too.
On Main, because then that really tends to block the view.
Yeah, but I would also rather block the view on Main than block the view of the neighborhoods that are really close by. I'm just wondering if there's a compromise to be had where it could be.
There's got to be a compromise because Main Street is not flat.
That's true.
Yeah.
Main Street's not flat and that would happen with Hampton. If you look at that massive building and I, and I don't, I'm not, I helped approve that building, but if you look at the Hampton and all the newer buildings, they're massive compared to the older, the older buildings that we have that are a little smaller. So we've got to find that, that sweet spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
The other thing about additional height on Main Street, the concerns we have. Is if you allow another story, for example, then the chances or it's, would be sort of inevitable that a lot of our smaller buildings would eventually get scraped.
Exactly.
And I don't necessarily think, I mean, some of them probably could be built and that would be fine, but just the whole eclectic nature of our Main Street, you know, I, I mean, this happened in Park City a little bit. All the new buildings were obsolete to the maximum building height. You know, they were the maximum that they could build. And we require stepping and all that kind of stuff, but it really, really changes character.
Okay.
So that's something to keep in mind.
Okay, so Nora, can we, about seven thirty, call it tonight?
Sure.
Okay.
And then you guys can take a look at these and think about them and give me input. Density, again, this is where, you know, we'll have to have a discussion about how big the buildings want to be and how big the projects want to be. So it's kind of two different things. Like we could have a big project like the Worldmark where each building is not really that big, but it's a massive project, perhaps, those are the issues we do, but just as an example. So do we want to talk about total project square footage maximums as well as individual building maximums?
Yes.
And we'll just have to play with what and where.
Yes.
Again, I see this applying mostly to the.
RC.
RC, yeah.
Yeah. Because the stuff in town, the lots are small enough.
Right. Well, I suppose the lots in town, you could have a couple of duplexes, but I don't think again that we'd worry about total square footage maximum problems. Okay.
Open space, right now, we really don't have, we have a minimal open space requirement for hotels and, and in some of our more commercial zones. So I would say for an overnight accommodation project, we'd have some required open space for guests to use and kids to run around and.
And this is over and above the setbacks, just to be clear, right?
Yeah, above and beyond setbacks, yeah.
Could we, with that thirty percent, how about their, when they build housing for their employees? Does that, in consideration with that, I mean?
I'd have to look at the ordinance. I don't think there's a requirement, there should be, but I'm not sure there's a requirement to that.
I'm just wondering if there's a trade off, you know, the property's so expensive.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine with that trade off personally.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that trade off coming out of something like that and for that reason.
I think so.
But that's, you know, this number's totally.
Yeah.
Right.
But that is a nice idea, when you cut your open space.
Thirty percent minus percentage of, we could figure that out.
Yeah.
Or even another step would be if they could provide any other type of housing that wasn't.
Necessarily.
For, necessarily for employee housing. I mean, if they could do that, that would be a big deal. We could say, hey, you know, you, let's cut that down to ten percent. If you could put ten percent of it into some kind of a local housing, you know, apartments, if it, because I can think of that property out there, that some of that could easily do that.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what does the next box mean? Minimum usable open space fifteen percent plus participation in open space in the area? They'd join together to do something?
So, yeah, so...
Okay.
What the thought there was for smaller parcels, where it might be really hard to provide thirty percent open space, allow, or as an option in some zones, allow less than open space requirements, plus some kind of a fee and lieu participation.
Okay.
And that would require a fee and lieu and probably down the line a little bit, but it's an idea.
Okay.
Site configuration, uh, this stuff is all, you know, primary uses shall face no way, so that we're not, and parking needs to be behind or on the side. A sea of parking. Um, the first one on page five. Developments thus fit the property, no mass grading or grading of a flat envelope. I think that this one's really important.
Uh huh.
Um, because I think our most unsightly, or like least popular looking, um, developments in town, they just grinded in a flat thing and it looks really obvious, and there's these big cut slopes, and I think that we want to try to avoid that as much as possible and have we step up the hillside.
And that, for me, would, uh, mean the input of our engineer and what no means, or most means, or none, or some, or any of those things. I'd like Chuck's input on that as well, I think, just to determine if we can't move any ground at all, or we can move so many cubic feet, or...
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
Absolutely.
That's a tough one.
Uh, building design, uh, no facade to exceed six hundred feet in length. Now, so what I've seen...
Sixty, or six hundred?
Sixty.
Sixty, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Six hundred is really big.
Yeah.
Um, so this could be per building, or it could be per significant, uh, massing of the building. So that you could have sixty feet here, and then, you know, you'd have to turn a corner and have, you know, sixty feet there. So you didn't have this big, huge, long thing.
You're trying to get away from the big box.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then, um, requiring vertical and horizontal shifts every thirty feet, which often isn't hugely effective. Right now, we have a requirement for, I think it only has to be one and a half feet of a shift in facade. Either this way or this way, and you can't even notice those generally.
But, but one thing nice about that is they changed the siding, usually.
The materials change, definitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, building design, again, proportion of recesses, blah, 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 location differences, and window placement, storefronts, um, roof type, plain material, and that's the most otherwise stated building type requirements. So, um, these are things that we certainly would need to work on, but, um, these are pretty standard, um, massing requirements, character requirements that are not a priority.
Okay, and my guess is that, uh, at least for me, I would be more than willing to take the planning department's opinion on these and run with it. I'm not sure that I could have much of a conversation about these things.
But it's, it's kind of what we've, we've been talking about. I mean, we want to change some of this to make it prettier, right? I agree that some people are coming in just to knock out a motel about the size of this, shape of this paper.
Right.
And fill it full of a hundred rooms and...
Right.
Walk out the door. But that's true. But, on the other hand, we have to be careful that we don't make it so it's unaffordable completely.
I agree.
Right?
Yeah. Um, uses located on the ground floor facing primary funding street. Sixty percent minimum ground story transparency is required. That's pretty typical. Um, transparency is any glass or windows and our doors included, blah, blah, blah. Um, and that's really a definition. But, um, the other thing that we want to address is we don't want buildings to be lanterns.
Yeah.
In other words, we don't want upper floors to be big expanses of glass that aren't lighted.
Also birds.
Yeah.
Let I point out the birds, and there's huge issues with bird strike on glass when it's honestly anywhere, but particularly the upper floors.
But we do have to be careful as well, as I keep reminding myself, that, uh, something like this with the six, sixty percent minimum ground story transparency would apply to hotels and not necessarily a condo.
True.
So...
Right. Blank wall limitations. Um, no facade, you know, you don't have big blank walls.
Could we, if, is there a way that we could have in there, the big blank walls could be something that could be remedied within maybe the first year of development so you could allow more spaces for public art? I mean, it's, it, I don't know that it would need to be, like, they would maybe be under contract with the city to have it be an available mural space?
Sure.
Like various hotels have done some exception. I just like the idea of them not having to just automatically just put something, so it's not a blank wall, and having, because there will be a lot more space for, you know, public artworks and...
Another murals, aren't we?
Yeah, it's cool. I like it.
Yeah, I get it.
Super awesome.
Uh, mixed image types is all pretty normal development standards. Salt Lake City uses a lot of these. Um, some development on the west side are significantly lower. The treatment of the ruse.
Yeah.
Um, that's really important. And then, materials and colors is really important, and this is something that we haven't had in the past. Um, but it requires eighty percent of each facade to be constructed of primary and durable materials. So that we don't get entire buildings that are EFS systems, for example, um, which is the, the little thin stucco. It's a insulation system. Um, and they can use that for sure as assets, but we don't want that to be the main, you know. We want durable material like hardy board.
Hardyboard?
I'm sorry?
Hardyboard?
Hardyboard, yeah.
Type?
Hardyboard.
I said hearty board. I was like...
Wood. You know, there's a variety of things, but I, um, eighty percent of each facade should be constructed of those materials. Primary building materials include high-quality durable natural materials, just, um, brick, adobe-type materials, wood lap siding, fiber cement boards, shingles, which I believe we should take off.
No shingles, please.
And then the northeast, um, panel, glass, metal siding glass, other high-quality materials could be approved. And then secondary facade materials, there are some examples, and that includes, um, a small area which is allowed through the EFS. Exterior insulation and finishing system.
So hang, hang on a minute. If, if these are the permitted primary building materials, we're excluding cinder block, shingles? What, what are we trying to keep out?
Uh, we're trying to keep out EFS for the whole, for the primary building material.
Okay.
Is really what we're doing. And my beef with EFS is that it is not durable. I lived in an apartment building, it was in six months, there, we had to do some pretty major repairs.
Okay.
And every year, it's a constant, it's just not a variable product of even art.
How do you spell it? I'm gonna look it up.
It's, uh, E...
E I F S.
E I F S.
Exterior insulation and finishing systems.
Sure, I know a lot about it.
Do you love it or not?
It's, it's durable. If it's, you know, uh, uh, when it first came out, Nora, that's true.
Yeah.
It was in the beginning stages of that, but, but it, it's, there's different, you know, types, there's...
Okay.
There's several different types of, uh, stucco that's applied. There's the hard coats, there's the soft coats, there's...
It's fine.
Well, it's, it's similar to stucco. And so, it would, and when, but when we go through all this, and you're, and all the suggestions of what you can and can't do, this is gonna be...
It won't be limited.
It's gonna be a nightmare in some ways. What's that?
EFS is not cheap.
Well, you know, you see it being used a lot, because it's an easier application, and, and it has all the different colors you can use with it, and that kind of thing, you know, and...
I want the, the fourplex that's on four hundred, uh, the green one, that's like, kind of by Porta Vista. It's like across the street when you're on your way to Bonderman's. Is that EFS?
I don't think so. I think that's...
Actual stucco?
Stucco.
The other nice thing about it is it has a nit, one ins- insulation factor that doesn't let things transfer through. When you come to some of these other recommendations you've had here, they don't have that ability. So, you know, there's a lot of things that come into play.
And we can talk more about that, and, you know, also, what I've found is that technology changes so fast with these building materials.
Sure does.
But, you know, we certainly want to add a clause that says, you know, new building materials will be considered, you know, through whatever.
Maybe warranties. Maybe, maybe you could say, well, you know, we want to use a product that has a twenty-year warranty, not a ten-year warranty, or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's totally good.
But to, but to start putting limits on some of these things, I think we'll get in a position where the, we're gonna be fighting with all these contractors and developers, because they're gonna, they're gonna want to fight you on some of this, right?
And, yeah.
So maybe that would be a better thing to do, is just say, eh.
Well, it's also a character thing. Um, I think that the buildings that are eighty percent EFS...
Oh, I know. I, I, I'm, I'm with you on that. Stone is better, you know, all those kind of things. Like, you could say, I want a forty percent stone, or something on, on a, on a motel, you know, that would be pretty simple. Boy, that sure takes care of a lot of that.
That's so good to make that.
Okay.
Okay.
Roof materials, colors, um, complementary to existing buildings in the area, and surrounding landscapes, we could get more specific if we would.
And this is very subjective.
Yes, it is.
So...
But it's hard to be specific without...
It is.
Limiting.
Right.
You want to put another red, red housing development in? I'm just saying. I'm, I'm dead serious, you guys, I, we, I, when we did that development, and they showed us the colors, when I was on planning and zoning back then, and they were showing us pictures for that, we just thought that red was for, for like, um, what am I trying to think?
Just illustrative?
Yeah, illustrative. So when it came up to be red and yellow, we were like, ooh, man. Totally screwed up that.
I don't know what project that was.
Um, that was, um, on Mill Creek, uh... Yeah, Sinema Court. You know, all those are red?
Yeah.
Red and yellow?
Yeah.
The colors? And, but I was just like, oh...
This is kind of a, it's kind of interesting. Just a general thought, but I know, we have this sort of laundry list of ideas, and I would almost like us to maybe figure out a way that we can have the must-haves and the nice-to-haves. And from the nice-to-have list, we literally have a list that applicants can look at, and if they can check five out of fifteen of the nice-to-have boxes, some sort of offset from the must-have, or from something else. I think that'd be really nice to have.
That's actually really nice.
To have incentives versus requirements for a lot of things.
I agree.
Or, or tons of things. It's like, we would love to have every building be a living building with its own solar and composting toilets and rainwater catchment, but whether or not that works for everything, but it would be nice to be like, yo, if you're gonna do these, you should maybe get something out of it, and kind of give maybe that little more of a shove without...
Yeah.
It feeling like it's like stepping on people's toes so much.
Or give a list of fifteen and say you must do five.
Yeah, or something like that.
But there's some things that also I think we can, or, and we talked to Zachariah, we talked about that with Zachariah and stuff, that there's some must-haves, and then there are others that fit.
Yeah.
Two out of these ten, or something like that.
Right, and I like that idea.
Yeah, I, I think it's good.
Like, if you, if you decide to have, I would like to, I mean, for me, just personally aesthetically, water, conservation, energy, cooling, everything. Like, I feel like, out of the list, if you had a green roof, you get a pass on so many other things. That would be just so awesome to see, particularly like you're thinking about the RC zone, the things that are on the west side that are down low, where you are able to see the tops of the buildings a lot more. How cool would it be if all those roofs had rooftop patios with gardens and natural soil-water retention systems? Or were growing their own food for the restaurant that's on the ground floor of the hotel? It kind of floors me that we don't have places like that in town already, actually. With as limited ground space as we have, that roofs aren't used better.
Yes. I think, I think that is a really good idea.
Uh huh.
We should provide options like that.
Yeah.
That not require them.
Yeah, exactly, to be like, look, this would be a really big get for the community. Like, man, that would be nice. How cool would that be when it's not just big hotels when you're coming into town, but like, oh, look, there's, you know, trumpet vine growing off the sides of the hotel or whatever, I don't know, but... And, and it, and it's space, and that could count towards their open space requirement if it's on a roof.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
That's a good, those are really good points. The, the growing food thing is maybe...
I would love to see that on something where it's not just open space grass or open space gravel, it's actual, like, and we talked about that a little bit when we were talking about the pad, like, some sort of community garden plot could count as their open space.
Yeah, have, some of that open space could be fruit trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes more sense than, you know what I mean? Because it's much more...
Totally.
Right.
Yep.
So before we end tonight, um, the very last thing is parking. I just want to make sure that we can get that oversized parking in some of these developments that's necessary and needed, and... Or we could send them all down to the Loves Truck Stop.
I guess there was some, uh, I guess there was something about the K U E R. About the Loves, we've been down to this story, K U E R, did you ever saw it?
Uh huh.
I've heard of it.
They had someone down here locally now, K U E R.
Oh, good.
I think so, yeah. Or at least, they're working conjunction, if you give me, in some way. I'm totally giving misinformation, but something happened with someone local.
So Nora, um, before our next meeting, what would you like us to do?
Take a look at these and see if you can kind of, and, and consider our zones and the character of them. And, um, like Moab, my place that we just approved, it's not built, but it's about thirty thousand square feet. Um, Hampton Inn's about that.
Okay.
Some of the bigger projects are closer to sixty thousand square feet, just to use that as a scale.
Uh, but the hoodoo, do you know?
Huge.
Is, you know how many square feet?
I don't. Off the, it's over a hundred thousand.
Oh.
I think so.
Can I ask a question?
But they had, they do have a lot of, uh, down the main floor, and I haven't been in it, but what I've heard is that there is a lot of open areas down there for meetings, restaurants.
Yep, it's really, it's quite nice.
It's pretty service, serviceable, I mean...
Yeah.
Okay, so, but that gives me an idea of what kind of scope we're talking about, because I can't, yeah.
I know, it's hard to figure out. I, I did that whole list, and then my kids try to do that out.
That'd be great.
That's why, that's why I think Hampton is actually one of the reasons why I think mass is so important. Because literally, all the things she talked about, cutting into the, cutting into the hillside, um, being higher than everything else as the road is going up higher, um, you know, that, that's something that we really need to look at, because I really think, I mean, it looks really nice, because we're used to looking at it, but when that first came out, man, that thing was huge. I mean, that was just major.
And I don't know, that's a tough one, I guess.
How big that is. But they cut right into the hillside, they did, you know, all this kind of stuff, and they just...
You talking about the Hyatt?
Oh, no, I'm talking about the Hampton. If you look in the back there, they just cut right into the hillside.
Well, but you know, I mean, we live in an area where some of that's going to be necessary.
Right.
Thank goodness they're able to at least do something with land, make land, and if you look at the Hyatt, look what they've done. They've done a great job. They put behind it, they stacked up some...
Right, right.
Buildings and, and that, but...
Right.
Good example.
That's a really nice development, except, except for the catchment basins. I think, I think we need, and, and this is going to be on the record, so I'm going to put it on the record right now. Um, catchment basins that we've had to do, um, in the past, in the last ten years or so, that all new developments need to have, um, ra, a catchment basin for, you know, for monsonal rains. I think the city in general has to look at that really, really seriously, and this is something that we were talking about, about holding that water underground, or whatever it may be. The problem is, is that when you deal with something like that, and you have, um, mosquitoes, like we did this past summer, um, that's something that we need to talk, talk about as a city, on how we... and how we want to handle that problem again. Whether we want, the county's gonna do it? Is it gonna be the counties that's gonna be in charge of it? Is it gonna be mosquito abatement? Is it gonna be the property owners' responsibility to get somebody to do that? Because ultimately, that, that affects everybody's quality of life. And it's a large, and those are large developments. They're going to have large catchment basins. And you, you're gonna have to look at that. That's something that, that the city is gonna have to look at in the future.
And even if the water just sits for a few days, it can, you can have a full hatch.
You can have a full hatch out of.
Really have it from like my chicken's water.
Exactly.
I mean, yeah.
Exactly. So that's something that, that, as we go through these development standards, we need to really look at that.
Because there's a new really nasty mosquito.
Yes, there is a really nasty mosquito. There's a really nasty, I'm on mosquito abatement. There's a really nasty mosquito that we really, really, really do not want in this valley. And so that's why you see so many trucks running around right now. So.
Can, can we, real quick, I just have kind of maybe a thought provoking thing. Parking being super important, we want hotels to provide adequate parking for their guests and for their trailers and for all of that. But also I am a little concerned just about the fact that we do live in a desert and it's a heat island when you have big, giant, open pavement. And if there's any way that we could figure out something.
Yes.
In development standards to.
No, certainly.
Yeah.
Square foot of asphalt versus, yeah. And a lot of people do it, a lot of malls do it. They have to have, if you've got, I don't even know, I'm guessing, throwing numbers out, a hundred square feet of pavement, you have to have a tree.
Yes, and that's, that's already, that's already in the, that's already in our.
That needs to be.
Shore it up a little more. Yeah, I would love to be fed up because like you really get that like, the amount of heat coming off.
Yeah.
Those, especially in our valley, and then it just hangs out.
That's true, but you know what? You brought up a good point because there are some motels that do have the gravel areas for their, all their parking. And that doesn't put out the heat that asphalt does.
That's true.
And when the water hits, it actually cools it down because it can go down to the ground. So maybe, because we don't know they're gonna maintain these trees, they're not gonna die, that kind of stuff. But if we did something about that over the, the big rig parking, like, you know.
Well, like the, the Bowen has behind it, it has oversized parking.
Has a little bit there.
It's just gravel.
Yeah.
Right.
But if you look at some of the motels north of town, they do have a lot of areas that are non-paved for that. And maybe we should recommend that.
Yeah.
That we don't want asphalt.
Oversized.
And some of that water doesn't have to run off.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Again, this is one of those areas where there's all this new technology.
Right.
Yeah. I'm just concerned about having it just be like a sea of parking lots. We need parking and, and you know, that can change when everybody's doing car shares in thirty years, but, and it can be used for something else and the standards can be changed. But for now, yeah.
And I want to say one more thing. And I don't know if this is the, how we get this on the, on the commission here, but our, our rules that we have right now regarding residential parking that's required, so if you have a lot, a hundred, a hundred square foot lot or, I mean, a hundred, a hundred feet in the front of a lot, seventy percent that, right, right now on the codes, we have seventy percent of that has to be landscaping. Okay? It's impossible. This group that came that's doing the, the big project over here on Powerhouse Lane, they have all these small lots for the condos. It's not gonna happen because they can't get the parking in. They don't know it yet. We have to change that. Because if you have twenty-five feet to go into a, a home, only thirty percent of that can be driveway. That's only eight feet.
Well, most lots, I mean, the standard lot width is fifty feet.
Well, but not here. Did you, you see what's going on with it?
Well, that's, yeah, I think there are some small.
But we have to change that. I mean, if we don't change that, it's gonna put a damper on our being able to get into all this housing that we've been talking about wanting to get into our city. You can't, you can't do it. I had to change my project into regular sized lots instead of the townhomes because I couldn't get the parking in it.
Okay.
We have to change that, that, not because of me, but because of everybody else.
And the small lots.
We have to change that parking. So how do we do it?
That's a good question. There are pros and cons to going both ways. There's, you know, we don't want these smaller lots to have their entire frontage as parking.
How did the Hospital of Development get around that? Because they certainly have large percentage driveway.
I have no idea.
Yet there's still no parking in that neighborhood. It's hysterical.
It's because nobody's watching it. If you go up on Doc Allen up there, when you have all these, these twin homes, go look at that.
Yep.
They're all ass, they're all sidewalk now. It's all poured concrete in front.
Yep. Even my, even my next door neighbor has poured concrete in his front yard.
Yeah, so it's not being, it's not being followed and it doesn't make any sense, to be honest with you. We shouldn't have it that way. We should reverse that. We should be thirty percent landscaping, seventy percent can be parking. We live in the desert. We don't need all the grass.
Well, we also do need a bunch of. We need.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So that's a brief, I just got, you know, my, my goal is to get something on.
This is real helpful.
Yeah.
This is great.
Which is great.
And then I'm going to try to make the next county planning commission meeting. I'm gonna try to arrange it, that's city council line for.
Yeah, it's tough.
So, but we're gonna try to figure it out.
Now that you have a staff.
Does I have staff? Corey's only working two days a week, so.
Oh, okay.
But still, huge, it's huge.
But we, we have a lot of work here to do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, don't we?
Yes.
So how can we do this when we show up at a meeting like this? And we have to, we have the public input and that kind of for other issues that we have to do. If we don't show up an hour earlier, two hours early to address this, just us, to talk about this, when are we gonna be able to do it?
The next meeting is all of this. It's five, there's nothing else on the agenda.
At five P M.
There you go.
I'm sorry?
Can we do a five P M?
Sure, if you want.
Yeah, start the workshop at five.
Okay, five P M.
I've actually been surprised to see that we haven't been starting.
Yeah, so workshop starts at five.
What's the date? It's gonna be, what is that?
It would be the fourth Thursday of the month.
Which is.
Which would be the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, thank you.
Five P M.
Yeah.
Now, I'm getting out of town next week, so.
You mean the twenty-sixth?
No.
Okay.
Next week.
Okay.
But what that means is I probably, I would need to get a whole lot of new material by Thursday, Friday.
And that's okay.
It's okay, it's all right.
Don't worry about it.
Thank you.
Now, would anybody like the city code for all of our zones printed out?
I would love it.
I, I use the online one, but thank you.
I would like it printed out because mine is old.
It's online.
Yeah, I know, but I don't have a printer.
Be nice to have a hard copy.
So you want a hard copy of?
Just the C two through.
Of zoning.
Of the Cs, yeah. So I can update my book and thumb through it, yeah.
Right, that would be good to have for the meeting, actually.
Okay. We're gonna make sure to get this.
Okay.
I like command.
So Corey, do you know what we, do you know what we're looking for? We're looking for the R, all the C zones.
What's allowed.
Be nice to have all the R zones too, but I mean, and then what's allowed in them, those zones?
All the permissions.